Good morning. This meeting of the Blair County Board of Commissioners will come to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection, after which we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
...to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicole, do we have anyone joining us here today?
We do not have anyone joining us, be it so.
Okay, thank you very much. Under item five in the agenda, you'll see the schedule of upcoming meetings. And we'll proceed then to item six and ask for any public comment at this time.
Hello.
Hi, if you would start just by hearing your name and the municipality of your residence.
Absolutely. My name is Megan Allwine, and I live in Greenwood in Blair County. And this is my friend Samantha Radford. Together, we have started the Blair County Breastfeeding Coalition. It's just started within the past two months, I believe, three or four months. So we're very new in our stages of our coalition. But we are both breastfeeding mothers and currently working through our certified lactation counselor licenses. We felt that it was necessary to bring a coalition to Blair County due to mothers just needing more support. We find that, you know, they go back to work and often they stop breastfeeding because they don't have the support from their employers. So it's our mission to bring the Breastfeeding Welcome Here pledge to Blair County. And I'll let Samantha take over.
So hi, I'm Dr. Samantha Radford. So I'm in the Blair Township. And like Megan said, we've recently started our coalition. We're working with the state level Pennsylvania Breastfeeding Coalition, too. And so August is National Breastfeeding Month, so we thought this was a good time to go ahead and come up here. And we're also working with the state, with First Foods, and several different organizations, with something called the Breastfeeding Welcome Here pledge. And there's basically two arms to that. The first part is viewing an organization as, you know, a business or a place that has patrons in some way. So basically, if you had someone come here to the courthouse, a patron who is nursing, you would have your employees trained, basically, to follow the law. So the Pennsylvania Right to Breastfeed Act says that anywhere a mother and child are allowed to be, they're allowed to breastfeed. You know, you can't ask them to cover up, you can't ask them to go somewhere else, you can't ask them to go nurse in the bathroom, because, of course, you wouldn't want to eat your lunch in the bathroom either. So just basically making sure that your employees are trained on that law. The second arm of our Breastfeeding Welcome Here pledge is looking at you as an employer. So recently, back in December, the Pump Act was passed, which basically expanded protections for lactating mothers, particularly if they need to express, you know, pump milk in the workplace. So it's just making sure that there is a space for lactating mothers to take care of that and making sure that they have the time. So we have more information. I don't know if there's a lactation room or something that could be, you know, turned into a lactation room in the courthouse, but we are happy to help you, you know, figure out what should that space look like, what's needed there. Because I know you said that you'll have several employees here, right? So it's something that's-
With Blair County being one of the largest employers, something we were looking to target would be the largest employers through Blair County, just to reach the most amount of people at once.
And get started, because if we've got it, you know, on like the county level, then we can go to businesses. And really, honestly, all we're asking is for things that are already part of the law, but we can help you make sure that you're in line with what the law states. So we've got some information. We've got our email address that we can give you all if there's anything that you need from us. If you're interested in signing these pledges, I believe Megan already has copies of them.
I actually have one that is the Business pledge that would be good, you know, for patrons coming in. If they're coming in for jury duty and they need a pump room and you're able to provide them with that, we do have that already here, ready to sign. And then we also have our Breastfeeding is Welcome Here employer pledge. So for your employees of the courthouse, just saying, you know, you have a proper space to pump that is in line with the Pump Act and the updated guidelines. I do have that as well. So and then just a little bit more information about PABC, which is our umbrella organization.
And if there's anything, if you want more detail later, we can certainly-
Okay, that would be great if you want to leave information with us. Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? Right, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Webster.
I don't have any comments today.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke?
I will say impromptu, as someone who was a Blair County employee, who did pump milk while I was an employee. We have a lactation room, but I don't think it's very well known that we do. And I wasn't aware of it until right before I left employment here. So it is something we've had some discussions about. And at one point, we're looking at getting a pod that we could put in our break room. So I think it would be a great time to revisit that and see if we can improve the situation.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the consent agenda, and Nicole, watch it up, please.
I do have one change to the consent agenda. Before I get into it, it is removing item N from the consent agenda. If you could please scratch that. That employee's status will change later in the month of September, but we're not sure of the dates. We're going to remove the N. Today's resolution is number 404 of 2023. It's the payment of two warrant lists as outlined in your agenda in item A. It's ratification of three warrant lists as outlined in item B. It's budget transfers in items C, D, E, F, G, and H. It's requesting improvement for payments of application, payment number eight and nine, received from Francis J. Palo in the amounts of $10,062.92 and $305,905.19 respectively for the Bridges 687, 8089, 92 Box Colbert Project. We are expecting those payments to be reimbursed fully through the roadmap project. It's employments, terminations, resignations, and retirements as outlined in items J, K, L, and M, respectively.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Webster, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. We'll move into item nine, Staff Resorts and Special Business. And we are pleased today to welcome Corey Johnson and Derek Schröder from Zelenkovsky Taxerion, who this is their first year to do the county audit. And so we're going to have a presentation from them this morning. Gentlemen, welcome.
Good morning. I'm Corey, this is Derek from ZA. I guess before I get started, you know, what I'm going to give you a little flavor of is we work with over 40 counties in the state. And over the years, we've had a lot of first-time audits, you know, with various counties. And I want to say, you know, special thanks to your Controller's Office and your Finance Office. They really made it a pleasant experience. We're great to work with. And probably the most common finding we have statewide is when we have material audit adjustments, we have to actually issue a finding for that. We do not have a finding for that here, and that is rare. I would say in three out of probably every four of our county audits, we have that finding. So congratulations to both those departments. I mean, that is, you know, a feather in their cap. They did a good job. Couple highlights, you know, when you look at your statement of net position, you'll see there's a-
Do you want to refer just up, we do have, the commissioners have drafts of this. This is a draft copy. We will have-
I'm just going to refer to a few pages here.
After my approval on Thursday, so.
Page 16. When you look at the bottom, there's a negative $49.8 million net position. I want to just explain that real quick. That is common. That's going to be common for any county that has a net pension liability and a net OPEB liability, your other post-employment benefits. The reason for that is, is you have a liability without having offsetting assets. So if you look at any school district's financial statement, those counties' financial statements, there are negative net positions there. That is not anything to be concerned with. That is par for the course for this industry. If you flip a couple of pages to page 18.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we were kind of trying to find where you were. Could you just explain that again?
Page 16 at the very bottom.
We got it.
Okay, you see under net position, there's a negative unrestricted net position of $49.8 million. And I was just explaining, that's caused by having a net pension liability and a net other post-employment benefit liability. And the difference, for most liabilities, you have an offsetting asset. You don't have an offsetting asset for those, so it causes the negative. And that's common in this industry. Like I said, you look at any school district's going to have significant negative net position. Most counties that have a net, you know, have a pension liability, an OPEB liability, they're also going to have a negative unrestricted net position.
It's just a result of a defined benefit pension in almost every organization.
Correct. And so when you have years where there's a big shift in the market, you know, one of the things on your pension statements I'll highlight, I mean, obviously, there was a decrease in net pension position held for benefits. It's just the market. And so you'll see that that extends those changes from year to year run through. And so that causes that liability to go up or down. That's probably the biggest variable in there. When you look at page 18, that's your balance sheet and your governmental funds. I just want to focus for a minute on the general fund and the fund balances. You'll see unassigned fund balances 15.2 million and total fund balance is 16.4 million. The unassigned fund balances, which is really a measure of what the rating agencies look at, that's about 29% of your current year general fund expenditures, which is, you know, a real solid ratio. You're in a good financial position in your general fund. That's the fund they look at. One more thing on the financials, if you look at page 23. Just want to refer to the comment I made on the decrease in the assets held for pension use. You'll see $6 million there. And that's just a result of market conditions. Every county we work with had a negative there for 22. But I mean, your pension position is in good shape. We work with counties, believe it or not, that are 30%, 40% funded. You're in a much better position than that. Note 12 on page 56 is a new footnote, one to highlight. This is the adoption of GASB 87 for leases. And this is, you know, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board's version of trying to close the loop on putting all long-term liabilities on your financial statements. Previous to this, the only liabilities that were on were capital leases. So now what they said is, hey, any operating lease that has a life of over 12 months now has to be put on the balance sheet. It was the way you've seen Enron, you've heard all the big cases over the years. It's basically all the hiding stuff off the balance sheet. Now they're trying to get it all on. This is where they closed that loop. So leases, operating leases were added to your balance sheet. There's a corresponding liability and a corresponding deferred position for that. Couple other deferred positions that I think are big changes this year in your financial statements. Opioid settlement, as you guys know, that's new. So that, the reason it's deferred, the defer is the capturing of the long-term receivable, that you're going to receive over a lengthy period of time.
And in that particular case, then that's an estimate that you made from?
We got that information from CCAP Trust. It's the best information that was available.
Yeah, so for the public, that is like an estimate at a point in time, because we really don't know what the flow is going to be from that exactly. And some of that goes out over 18 years.
Yes.
So it's spread. And I always say that because there's been a misconception by the public that the county got $5 million and they think the same, they think the same thing. But it is, instead, it's more of a deferred receivable.
I want to say that at this point, you receive two or three payments of a couple hundred thousand each of them. It's not substantial. And for the public's sake, I mean, those dollars are restricted in their use, so they're not able to be used for anything. The other significant deferral that I wanted to mention real quick was for the American Rescue Plan funds and the ERAP funds. So there's deferrals for them, and as reporting periods come through, they will be, they will flow off the balance sheet in the statement here in the very near future, probably in '23, I would guess. So basically, things get deferred when they're not recognized as being used. And they can't really, in the American Rescue Plan situation, they can't be recognized as being used until they're reported as being used, which you'll deal with. I'll comment, so. There was, let me find it here. On page 60, there was a couple minor restatements of fund balances. And the big one was just moving funds out of other funds into their own funds, basically, because they're restricted for their own purposes. So they really should be shown in their own funds. It doesn't change anything other than a little bit of the presentation on your financial statements from the prior year. There's really no net effect there. Derek's going to talk here a little bit about the single.
Yeah, before I do that, too, I would like to say that as far as the restatement goes that Corey just talked about, in a comparison between the prior year audit report and our report, the special grants fund was pulled out of general fund. So if you're looking to compare general fund last year versus general fund this year, it's going to be, you'll have to include your special grants fund together to do that. So I just wanted to make that clear. So if you guys saw anything that was way out of whack, that's why, so. As far as the single audit goes, single audit is a test that's required, an audit that's required over your federal funds. And it can also lead to state requirements as well that we would have to test. That's your second audit report. So what we end up having to do is we'll schedule all of your federal grants and based through tests, usually based on size, we'll select programs that make up a significant portion of your scheduled expenditures of federal awards. We'll find programs that need to be selected to be tested, and we'll test those programs. This year, your bigger programs were ERAP and ARC, those two programs, as well as some of your Children and Youth Funds, your Medical Assistance Transportation Program, and also your MHID program that you guys have. Everything went well. We did have two findings on the state side. The federal side, we didn't have any findings with any of the ARC funds or ERAP funds. But when it came to the state DHS funds, we did end up having two findings. One was with children and youth, and it has to do with an AUP report for monitoring that was not filled out. And the other was another form that the state requires for a roster of personnel levels. But outside of those two things, we've discussed those with management, and it looks like we're in a good place to make sure those two things go away next year. So outside of that, that's really the only major issues, or I wouldn't even call them major at this point, but any issues that we would even have as far as single audit goes.
Questions? Say as a comment, I think that, again, just from our recent, the last couple of days, that it's safe to say the county is probably in the best financial position it's been in many, many years. We're grateful for that, as we still work on a lot of people here, not only from the Finance Office and the Controller's Office, but then in the team effort. So we appreciate that much help to buy, you know, one of the few good things about the pandemic. It did obviously provide us with some much-needed funding, which has been very helpful. And the fact that we have two findings. Controllers took one, how many was it our first year when we came?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, so, which was a shocker to us as we came into office, as we were not used to seeing anywhere near that many. So this is certainly a move in the right direction, so we appreciate that. Again, and we appreciate your professionalism and advice and counsel, not only during the audit, but also help with ARPA funds and other pieces of you that you provide.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I know the agenda says that it does have on that requesting approval of acceptance. We will accept that at our Thursday meeting after we have the chance again to review that copy.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much for joining us, gentlemen. And please pass along to your team, maybe Derek, if you would, we appreciate their cooperation and help during all those processes.
Appreciate that, Nick.
Thank you. Right. Next item is from Department of Emergency Services, and Chris Ferguson is here in person. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning. The first item, we're requesting approval of a cost contract between the County of Blair on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services and DeAndre Media for the purchase of custom-designed pens with the emergency management logo for various community outreach events in a total amount of $475.
Questions for Chris?
Chris, I hate to be a pain, but I figured it out from looking at the invoice, and it comes out to be 95 cents a pen that we're paying. This comes from the general fund, or your regular funds, correct? It's not like a grant or anything like that. It just, I've seen them, you know, we get them when we go to the different trainings, and that's nice. But the folks that are at the trainings already know that we have an emergency management. I'm not sure what the purpose of it really would be.
Well, we've also given them out when we go to public events, not just the, are you referring to like our SARA summit where we would be industry and first responders? When we go to educational events for the public, we've also given them out there as well. These pens that we had in the past, we've had for five years, so they do last quite some time. I'm not sure what else to.
I don't think it's so much, kind of rephrase it, so much the amount, obviously, which is minor enough.
It is minor. I don't have the-
I think it's more principled in terms of, you know, people could view that as using their money for swag or something to that effect, and-
You have to be careful of that.
Right.
I think my recollection of other items that are similar have all been purchased from grant funds. I know Victim Witness has some items like that, but it's through either Boca or Rasa. And I think Children and Youth has done some things, but they're usually purchased through the visitation grant, which doesn't have a county match, to my knowledge. So I think that's where I'm kind of struggling with whether it's an actual need if we're, you know, if we don't have alternative funding for it.
And these are specific to the department as opposed to our hazardous material funds would have to be something that's specifically just for hazardous materials. So that is why it's not coming from that fund.
Yeah, but again, it is from, right, the taxpayers' money, and it's not, it isn't a huge amount. But I recall in the past that when we had other similar items, I probably complained about those, too, because I always do, but they did come from grant funds. There isn't another source of grant, I mean, because if it's related to the hazardous materials trainings, I don't know. But well, it is, but it isn't, I guess. Part of it is, part of it isn't.
Right, because if we had a flooding event and we were opening up a center for people to come in and get information, that would be something as well that would be there. So that's one of the things that falls under our whole department and not just hazardous materials.
And I understand that you like to, like, I don't mean like, that you prefer to be able to provide pens, because when we go to the SARA summit and all those different things, we're writing stuff down and, you know, emergency, keeping track of numbers and different things like that. So you want to make sure people have pens, but, you know, just general regular pens would certainly do the trick for that kind of thing. Okay? It's just hard to justify with taxpayer funds, that's all. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
We'll leave it on the agenda. I think there seems to be some consensus that probably will not be improved during this meeting at this point in time, so. Unless there is some other funding source other than general fund that you want to hold back from, or have the ability to.
I don't have that, if that's a question for now. Okay.
Okay, do you want to go on to the second?
Nice, that's nice. Okay, we're requesting approval of a one-year Advantage Prime Service Agreement between the County of Blair, Department of Emergency Services, and Genmark, formerly known as Runmark and Schneider Electric, for the VA Galaxy 5000 Uninterrupted Power Supply System in the annual amount of $5,205 for the period of 11/1/23 through 10/31/24. That is what provides 911 with uninterrupted power.
This is an annual contract, same as last year, or any in terms of dollar amount as well? Any questions for Chris on that? You got the first name? And your third request?
Requesting approval to amend the Resolution 109, 2023 dated March 9th of 2023 by removing the language in an amount not to exceed $600 for 2023 from said resolution that originally approved the Master Service Agreement and Statement of Work between the County of Blair on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services, 911E, and Language Line Services Incorporated to provide limited English proficient individuals with spoken language statements converting English to another language in amount not to exceed $600 for 2023.
I think just further on this, this is a clerical error. The contract did not state $600 maximum, but the resolution did. So what you're doing now is just taking that wording out of the resolution to match then the contract. So it was something that we missed when we were doing our agenda packets.
Thank you.
I think that's something we wouldn't want to limit if there is a need for it.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I wondered how we arrived at 600.
I believe, because that was the line that she had in her budget.
Oh, okay, that makes sense, but at that time, yes.
We would transfer money if we needed those services, so yes, okay.
I guess, first of all, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Sure, you can.
Lindsay.
Lindsay, I grew up-
I'm bored.
I did it, so I should probably go. Okay, so requesting approval of an agreement for payment of legal services between the County of Blair, Blair County Children and Youth, and Finelli Willitt Law Offices regarding ad line of services in the monthly amount of $2,100. This is for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th of 2024. There is also an additional $200 preparation fee for a power of attorney. This is new in all of the guardian ad litem agreements. Any questions?
Thank you, Lindsay. I indeed juvenile probation and guardianship, Mark is new anymore. Do you have thoughts? What do you think?
I will request your approval of the student assistance-
I will request your approval of the student assistance program in a juvenile probation office between the County of Blair on behalf of Blair County Juvenile Probation Office and Holley-Burgary School District for the period of August 1 through 2/23 through June 30 of 2024.
This is the first of these, I believe, receiving another X number from other school issues.
I'm assuming this is the first one I had to deal with since I got hired.
I don't think we've gotten one yet this school year, so this is about the time I think they start to roll around. So this is an annual. Thank you. I did the Thursday meeting as well. Thank you, Jim. Lindsay MC's at that.
Right. So we are requesting approval of an amendment to the original agreement with Tyler Technologies that was back in summer 9 of 2016, to add what's called our PACE program. It's for six days of what they call PACE services, and this is in the annual amount of $8,325, and then it's plus any associated travel costs for that one-year period. And this amendment, we're news annually unless we decide to cancel. There is a cancellation provision with that. So PACE stands for Planned Annual Continuing Education, and it offers the following benefits to the county. Continued work process improvements to adopt new features. For example, one we're looking at is the timekeeping, electronic timekeeping, and taking advantage of new technical enhancements, some things that happen in the upgrade with Tyler that we're currently not using, but we could use if we knew they were there. Ongoing education to train staff, so that would work in like a train-the-trainer type of fashion, or you can do classes of multiple individuals, most likely department heads. Periodic utilization assessments, so how are you using the program? How can you use it better? What's your, what's your process that you use? And is there maybe a button that you could click that does something that usually takes you an hour, because sometimes we find this. It also includes three free registrations to the annual Tyler Connect Conference, and that's a value of $3,750. So we do, we have been going to the Tyler Annual Conference. We would like to continue going because of the amount of knowledge that we bring back from that conference. And then they also provide assistance with the year-end clothes, 1099s, WQs, 1095s, budget preparation, anything else that we would have questions on, or maybe want to improve processes on, and also with upgrading. So the county made a huge initial investment in the program for obtaining units and enterprise ERP, and this program, the PACE program, just ensures that we'll get the most out of that investment.
Lindsay, thank you for sharing that. Because I think it's important that we realize the return on investment here. For those of you who work in the room historically who lived through the, specifically more details of it, which would be Controller Stickell, Chief Deputy Controller Wagner, and Chief Clerk Heminger, as well as myself, it was difficult. There were a lot of complaints about training early on, and part of that, a lot of that was Tyler's fault, frankly, that it hadn't done. But since then, we found out slowly that the usefulness of the system and the fact that we are underusing it, and there's no doubt, I think this is a great return on investment for the $8,300 a year that we're looking at. So thank you for laying out that, just, you know, what some of the benefits are. Questions, other questions, comments for Lindsay?
Is this something that any of the, any of the department heads, for example, that are having issues with Tyler could go to, or is this different from questions that they would have personally?
Yeah, this is different from like technical support. Typically, anyone in my office or the controller's office can help with any like technical support questions, unless it's something we can't figure out. Then we reach out to Tyler. They have an online ticketing system. So that's for technical, like small things like, oh, I can't open this window. This would be for looking at modules that we're using, and someone would sit with you and say, how are you doing this process? Like, how are you running payroll, for example? And then you would run your payroll, and they would say, did you know there was this option here? Or did you know there was this report here that you could do? Or a double check? Or there's this feature? So they look, they're more looking at what you have in place and improving upon that. So they, they assign you a manager of your PACE program, and then they come up with a plan of how you're going to use those days with the most benefit. So it's open to any department. There is one module, the project ledger, that we just have not gotten a completely full handle on, except for social services. They have a pretty good handle on it. They're just not using it full-time right now. But we don't know the full features of that program. We are paying for that module. We've been paying for that module, and we've just not been able to get out what we're really seeking in there. We could, with some extra help, from what I would call implementation assistance. And that's what this program would provide. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
So it is. It's a return on investment, and it allows us really to maximize, you know, to maximize more of this, and maximize more of the, you know.
Yes. Okay.
I think that's the Thursday's meeting as well.
I sure am. This is, this was a shoot before aiming. So Thursday morning, Controller Stickell and I met in the hallway at 8:15, getting ready for prison board with what appeared to be no Blue Jeans account, which is how we publicly advertise and provide, you know, a glimpse of our meetings to the outside world that would like to participate by phone or virtually in our public meetings. After some discussions with IT Director Don Weakland, as well as Blue Jeans as a company, Blue Jeans had announced a while back that they were phasing out certain accounts for service. Verizon, who owns Blue Jeans, was no longer going to be keeping that on as a product line, unfortunately. When that announcement came, Don had checked in. He thought that the contract that we had would be good because he felt as though we had an enterprise contract, and that it would have a longer life than what appeared to be last Thursday's death. So it actually ended up that wires were crossed somewhere at Blue Jeans, and our account had switched to a free account, which then meant that it was on the chocolate block sooner than later. A check of our entire email system, because I thought, well, maybe it went to an ex-employee that's no longer with the county, or some kind of notice went in. There was no Blue Jeans emails alerting us to that sudden departure of our virtual option. Within about four hours, we had researched and decided that Zoom was the best fit for the county. Unfortunately, that required an immediate credit card payment, which I'm asking to ratify at this time. The change to the Blue Jeans, from the Blue Jeans platform to Zoom was announced in the top of every meeting agenda and will be from here on out. And I'll discuss with solicitors if we need any more formal announcement for that change, since it's not the only option anymore to participate from our meeting as it was back during the pandemic when that Blue Jeans program came on. Anytime we had a change to the username or password to that Blue Jeans account, we did have to publicly advertise it because it was the only way that we were coming into, into the meeting as participants. Now that we have the in-person option, I'll request from the solicitor how that be, not necessarily Jeff, I won't put you on the spot, but Nathan and I will discuss how that change to platforms should be handled and/or announced. But for today, I'm asking for the ratification. That is a one-year subscription. We're talking about 10 licenses to start. We already know we are going to exceed that, and we'll need to come back for more, but we'll request proper approval for that once we have a full list of all the, all the accounts that are needed. The 10 licenses were $2,108.94. They were placed on a P-card on August 18.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions from Nicole? Now I'm going to make a motion to ratify the subscription, and the voice with Zoom has outlined the agenda. Is there a second?
Mr. Webster, second.
Is there any other discussion?
I do have something else that I forgot to, failed, I failed to mention. There is an out clause. This is an annual subscription, but if for some reason there's terms and conditions or something else that we want to go with, we can certainly terminate at any time. I don't know if that would come with a prorated cost, probably not, because it was a prepaid annual subscription, but at least we can make that educated decision before August 17 of 2024.
That's good. Any other discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please take the public's hand. Aye.
Aye.
It's approved. And Nicole, and we'll move on to ADM, Commissioner's Office, and Allison Stankovich. Good morning, Allison.
Good morning. So I'm here today. This is an annual request of approval of the 2023-2024 volunteer AD&amp;D program renewal application with CCAP. This is for the period of October 1, 23, through October 1, 24. And your agenda does list the fees associated with the numbers provided to them for the subscription.
This is done on, in terms of the premium, it's calculated on a estimated or most recent number of volunteers.
Correct. This does include the work release volunteers that may be released from the prison to do things such as mow grass or clean up litter, laundry, anything else that they would leave the main courthouse, or the main prison for.
It's essentially medical and, I don't know, definitely some of them. That's about it.
I realize that at this point, we do not have any volunteers with EMA, but I know that Mark is always looking for volunteers. Are they, would they be covered under this program, or is that something different?
We have always requested their number of volunteers, and it has not wavered since pre-pandemic numbers. So we have always paid for volunteers, even though they've not been activated at the 911 center or through EMA. So there is coverage.
So it's covered, it just doesn't have.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. We have no old business and have reached the end of our agenda, so we'll adjourn at this time, and thank everyone for their participation in today's meeting.